I'd like to call to order the study session of Lakewood City Council, Lakewood, Colorado on September 19th, 2022. At 6:00 PM this evening, the public input call-in line is going to be 720-707-2699 with the webinar ID of 836-2082-8098. You can also log on to LakewoodSpeaks.org and find the same information as well as background to what we'll be talking about this evening. So with that, Mr. Rob, will you please take the roll call?
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Jansen. I believe Councillor Jansen is going to be about 5:00 to 10:00 in late. Mayat Guerrero.
Here.
Vincent.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
Charazai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Stuart.
Here.
Wolver.
Here.
Mayor Paul, you have a quorum.
Awesome. Well, I would like to thank everybody who's joining us tonight. This is a unique and special time of the year where we come together and review the budget as we start to move forward, which will then be a culmination of two public hearings in order for passage. And so we'll have the opportunity here in a minute, I'll turn item three over to Ms. Hodson. And just to give everybody an indication of how the flow will go, there'll be a staff presentation. And then the Chair of our Budget and Audit Committee, Councillor Strom, will take it from there. And we'll certainly introduce our citizen representatives who are part of the Budget and Audit Committee. And if we do have any of our citizen representatives who are tuned in and not brought over to panelists, please just let us know and we'll get you brought over. I also want to thank everybody. There was a question about questions. And we certainly like to try to get as many as we can in advance, knowing that there'll be plenty of opportunity for question and answers during this process. But as a common courtesy to staff, just to make sure we get the right information out. So I saw, I think there was seven pages of questions that have come through so far and want to thank everybody for that. So with that, I will turn it over to City Manager Kathy Hodson. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. So before I introduce our CFO for her presentation, I just wanted to make a few comments. The 2023 budget document represents hundreds of hours by representatives from each department, each of the 11 departments, along with the Finance Department. This, this budget book that you all have represents over $250 million budget. And I'd like to just really appreciate the budget team for putting all this information together. The information within this document represents and reflects community priorities as established through surveys, community meetings, council meetings, Lakewood Speaks feedback. And finally, from councils' planning session, the priorities, goals, and core community values that were established at that time. And of course, I need to mention the Budget Audit Board, who have been instrumental in informing this process as well. Volumes of information went within this book. And I'd like to thank you for taking the time to become familiar with all that's within. So again, thank you to the department representatives and to the budget team. In my 13 years, this is the best proposed budget document submitted to date. So thank you for all your hard work. And now I want to introduce Holly Bjorklund, who is our Chief Financial Officer, and she'll lead the presentation. So with that, take it away, Holly.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Hodson. Good evening, Ms. Bjorklund. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I will share my presentation and get started. Okay, can everyone see the presentation? Good. All right. So at the beginning of each year, the City Council identifies core community values, priorities, and goals through its annual planning process. This budget presentation is a financial reflection of these community values, priorities, and goals. The budget process is a collaborative effort of City Council, Budget and Audit Board, community members, and staff to develop a plan that continues to provide quality programs and services to the community. Tonight, we'll be reviewing the City Manager proposed 2022 revised and 2023 budget. The Budget and Audit Board will be reviewing the budget on September 28th. Then the first public hearing will be October 3rd and the second public hearing on October 17th. So what we're going to cover tonight is the city budgeting process, proposed 2022 revised and 2023 budget, looking at the total city budget, the general, and then also the general fund, capital, and Tabor funds in a little more detail. And then you'll hear from the department directors, four of them, to talk about department updates and what projects they're working on. Then we'll have the opportunity for questions. So here are some Lakewood facts that may interest you and the citizens of Lakewood. The yellow circles are identifying the change from July 2021 to July of 2022. I'm going to jump around just a little bit to point out the comparative data, but I think it'll make sense. You can see on this slide, the average household income is, has an increase of 3%. The average housing price has an increase of 23%. And the average monthly rent is increased by 10%. That indicates that average housing price and the monthly rent are really outpacing the average household income. The population has decreased by 1.4%, which reflects the city of Lakewood as an established city and no longer a growth city. The population in the labor force has dropped by 3.5%, while the unemployment rate has dropped by 2.8%. And it is at 3.2%, which is close to the pre-pandemic numbers of 3%. As a reference point, in 2020, unemployment got to as high as 12.4% in Lakewood. Now, looking at the business statistics, so on the right-hand side of this slide, commercial vacancy rates have increased by 13% with the shift from in-person to hybrid, remote work settings and a shift in consumer behaviors of buying more through online retailers. Although commercial vacancies have increased, the monthly rent has also increased by 7% within Lakewood. This is an indication of the increase in real estate values in Lakewood. For the budget process, we first started with the community priorities. And then we analyzed, we analyzed the different parts of the budget, starting with estimating revenue, prioritizing expenses, looking at programs and personnel, capital projects and construction. And the prioritization of this is based on those community values, priorities, and goals. And then we evaluate the fund balances and then budget by fund. The gathering of information also includes the input of the Budget Audit Board, City Council, community members, and staff. Thank you to all that were involved in this process to date. And in particular, a special thank you to the City Manager, the department directors, staff, and the budget team, Shane O'Neill and Deborah Ginkel. There were many hours dedicated to the budget process, as the City Manager had mentioned, to ensure collaboration and effective teamwork to create a budget that is sustainable and is focused on providing quality programs and services for the community. We are now looking forward to the review part of the budget process, where we hear questions and input from the Budget Audit Board and the City Council. Next, we'll talk about the proposed 2022 revised and 2023 budget. The total city view will be covered first, and then the general fund, capital, and Tabor funds. Lakewood has 17 different funds, and they are grouped into five types. The largest fund is the general fund, which can be used for any purpose. Capital project funds, which are specifically for acquisitions or construction and maintenance of capital facilities and other assets. The two capital project funds we have are capital improvement and equipment replacement fund. Then we have the enterprise funds, which is a government-owned business that has no more than 10% state or local government funding. Lakewood has the golf course and three utility funds, sewer, stormwater, and water. Then the special revenue funds are restricted funds allocating a discrete purpose. Lakewood has the grant fund, Tabor, open space, Conservation Trust, Heritage, Culture and Arts, and Economic Development Funds. Lastly, we have the internal service funds that are used for, to account for costs that are shared or allocated across multiple departments and funds such as medical, dental, and other insurance-related costs. Next, we'll talk about the revenue by fund type for the total city. So the first bar shows 2019 actuals, then we have 2020 actuals, 2021 actuals, the 2022 adopted budget, 2022 revised budget, and the 2023 proposed budget. For the general fund, which are the blue bars, you can see the dip in revenue of $9.3 million between 2019 and 2020 due to COVID. The increase of $12.8 million from 2020 to 2021 actuals is primarily due to recovery of sales and use tax after COVID. Then the increase from 2022 budget to 2022 revised budget and the increase in 2023 is primarily driven by inflation and a small amount of growth. For the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, which are the red bars, there was $10.8 million received in 2021 and 2022. The capital funds, which are the green bars, have the same sales tax revenue trends as the general fund. The enterprise funds, which are the yellow bars, show moderate growth. And the special revenue funds, which are the brown bars, you can see an uptick in 2020 actuals, which is due to $12.3 million for CARES Act. And in 2022 and 2023, there are grant opportunities being explored, which is why the revenue jumps from 24 million to 32.6. The staff are always continually exploring other ways to fund projects and services. In summary, the most significant changes in the city's revenue estimates are the return of sales and use tax, inflation, and grant opportunities. This slide displays how all city funds are spent by departments. You can see Public Works is 27% of our spending. That's primarily assets. Police is 24% of our spending, which is primarily people. And we have Community Resources, which is 19%, and that's about half people, half assets. And we have non-departmental, which is 15%. And all other departments is less than 4% per department, and that's a total of 15%. Normally, we don't make a lot of changes in the current year budget. However, this year, there were some sizable changes to highlight, so I wanted to share those with you. For revenue, there is a total increase of 28 million for the 2022 revised budget. The 17 million increase in sales and use tax is primarily due to inflation and a small amount of growth. 9 million in grant and intergovernmental is primarily due to the pursuit of pursuing new grants. And some examples of projects that are associated with grants are the Colfax Safety Project, Safe Roots to School, and Bike Pass on Alameda and West Rail. The 2 million increase in charges for services is primarily due to continuing, continued interest in golf and a return to community resources programs. For expenses, there was an increase of $11 million to 2022 revised budget. The vacancy savings of 4 million is primarily driven by difficulty keeping and hiring staff. However, we have started to see an improvement in this area. Parkland acquisitions also had an increase of 3.5 million, which was using Tabor funds. Capital projects increased of 8.2 million is primarily due to a shift in timing of projects. And 3.3 million was added for the increase in gasoline costs. In addition to the important ongoing work that is done by the city every year, the 2023 budget has a few areas of specific focus. Based on the city's priorities, the proposed 2023 budget has two primary areas of focus, city infrastructure investment and addressing staffing shortages. The budget also reflects the city's continued work on the issues surrounding residents without housing and its efforts to make sustainability a priority. You'll, you will hear more about these items and others during this presentation. Besides looking at the current year and the next year, it's important to look at the big picture. So looking first at the short term, we have had an inflow of one-time funds from ARPA and a return of ongoing revenue in which sales tax has returned to the 2019 levels. We also have seen record-high inflation and service levels being affected by insufficient staffing. Although we've received ARPA funds, which are being used to invest in the city's infrastructure and revenue has returned to the 2019 levels, we are seeing challenges in the long term. As the city has become an established city and the infrastructure is aging, there needs to be a shift of more of the city's spending on maintenance and replacement. There are limited funds expected to be available for this investment. Additionally, starting in 2026, revenue over the Tabor limit will be returning to the taxpayers and no longer funding parklands, infrastructure, and police expenses. Both of these create a revenue expense gap since community needs are expected to continue to grow and the city's infrastructure will continue to age. Lakewood is evaluating and adjusting the current revenue sources and potential changes for the future to sustain the city's financial health while providing core services to residents. Additionally, the city has taken action to stabilize tax income. In 2022 budget, the funds for ARPA were allocated. But I thought it would be helpful to revisit what the funds are being invested in since they will be spent over multiple years. As the staff reviewed the needs of the city and what can be supported by ongoing revenue, it became clear that infrastructure maintenance and replacement has been underfunded historically and that current ongoing revenue is not expected to grow enough to meet these needs. It was then identified the largest need for serving the community is to utilize these one-time funds in infrastructure maintenance and replacement. On this slide, you'll see the projects identified for the use of these funds as well as an additional 10 million investment that is funded by General Fund 2020 Expense Savings. The projects are deferred maintenance and equipment replacement, sidewalk construction and maintenance, finance and HR system replacement, maintenance campus modification and rehab, radio system upgrades and equipment replacement, civic center fire and safety improvements, and miscellaneous. The items and miscellaneous of the 931,000 include the video camera infrastructure, homelessness navigation vehicles, renewable energy study for the city buildings, budget resiliency plan project, and ADA compliance. These all add up to an investment of 30.7 million and will be invested over five years. This investment will provide some catch-up on maintenance, maintaining the services cities provide today. It gives a little breathing room for the long-term revenue expense gap, which will give the city time to thoughtfully address the long-term challenges. Staffing is assessed and evaluated during the budget process before any employee is hired. In the 2020 budget, there was, I'm sorry, 2022 budget, there was a request for a minimum amount of unfunded positions to be funded. During the budget planning process this year, there were 45.5 unfunded positions. After an extensive review process of the staffing needs for the 2023 proposed budget, is requesting 32.6 funded positions to sustain services with the current needs of the community. It is also recommended 10 positions remain vacant, and the remaining three positions were taken out of the budget. There is also a proposed COLA increase in Q4 2022 to support retaining and recruiting staff in a difficult staffing market. Now that we have covered the total city review, we're going to talk about the general fund. The general fund serves as the city's primary operating fund and accounts for ordinary operations, finance, from taxes and general revenue. This slide shows you the distribution of the general fund revenue by type of revenue for the 2023 budget. Most of these groupings are clear as to what they include. The one that's not as clear is the intergovernmental, which includes state and federal funding. And then other includes fines, profits, and investment income. This donut gives you a visual display of how much sales and use tax dominates the total revenue for the general fund. Next, we'll talk about the economic forecast for sales tax growth from the Office of State Planning and Budgeting, the Colorado Legislative Council, and the city of Lakewood. Just a reminder, the state fiscal year is July to June, and the city's Lakewood, City of Lakewood follows a calendar year. The state also has different tax codes, which create a difference in the projections. These state estimates of sales tax growth are helpful, but not necessarily indicate what the city should forecast. The current economic outlook for inflation is 4% for 2023. Although there is expected to be a recession in 2023, the city is forecasting a 2% growth beyond inflation due to the increase in compliance and sales tax collection we have experienced from the simplification of the sales tax code. We also expect to see further compliance by moving on to the state tax. We also expect to see further compliance by moving on to the state tax system called SUTS. And as a side note, we are moving on to that actually as of today. So the next slide on sales tax, I would like to look at the right-hand side of the slide first. This gives you the distribution of how sales tax revenue is distributed by industry for the city of Lakewood. So you can see that retail is 47% of our sales tax and restaurants and grocery stores are 15%. Utilities are 8%, services are 9%, and other is 6%. And then on the left-hand side of the slide, you can see that in total, our growth year-to-date is 10% over 2021. However, 9% of that is due to inflation, so we really only have a 1% of real growth. The two pie charts here represent the percentage of sales tax that is generated within the city versus outside of the city. The reason staff started to focus on this is because in 2019, we started to see a trend of in-city revenue starting to decline and we did not see a corresponding increase in out-of-city revenue. Although we knew the spending habits of residents were changing to purchasing more online versus in-stores, we did not realize the impact this change would have on sales tax. With efforts of staff and approval from city council, the sales tax code was updated in 2021. The tax code was simplified and made more consistent with the state, so it is easier for businesses to file taxes with the city. I also mentioned on an earlier slide that the city had just moved on to the state system, which will further simplify for businesses and allow for the city to collect sales tax from out-of-city businesses. These efforts in collaboration with the city attorney's office has improved the sales tax compliance. And you can see from this pie chart that the out-of-city revenue grew from 27% to 34% from 2019 to 2022. This slide gives you an example of property tax for a home valued at $600,000. As you can see, the city gets the smallest portion of this revenue, which is 5%. Property tax revenues are the second-largest source of ongoing revenue for the city. Now we've talked about general fund revenue, this graph shows you, now we will talk about general fund revenue. This graph shows you the 2021 actuals, the 2022 adopted budget, 22 revised budget, 23 proposed budget, and the 24 through 27 forecast for general fund revenue. The red bars show you the projected Tabor transfer refund amount. Returning to refunds above the Tabor limit will start in 2026. The orange bar shows the ARPA funds and the blue bar shows what's remaining in the general fund. As you can see, for the out-years, we are expecting a gradual increase in the general fund revenue. This slide shows the general fund expenses for 2021 actuals, 22 adopted budget, 22 revised budget, 23 proposed, and the forecast from 24 through 27. The blue bars show the annual operating costs to continue services at the current level. The red bars show the one-time projects and investment from the general fund. These projects are the Navigation Center for Residents Without Housing and the North Dry Gulch Project for Flood Plane Mitigation. The reason these projects are forecasted in the general fund is currently it is not expected the Capital Improvement Fund and the Stormwater Fund will be able to fully support funding these projects. These projections do not include additional investments that will need to be made for projects that we do not have solid estimates identified and timing. The department directors will speak this evening, will touch on some of these additional investments that will need to be made due to the city's aging infrastructure. This graph shows the general fund balance, beginning with 2021 actuals, 22 adopted budget, 22 revised budget, 23 proposed, and the forecast from 24 to 27. You can see the one-time projects will considerably reduce the fund balance. However, the general fund is projected to still maintain the minimum 10% reserve required. Now shifting to the Capital Improvement Fund, you can see on this slide the Capital Improvement Fund for 2021 actuals through 2027 forecast for revenue and expense. This forecast includes all revenue for the fund and only the maintenance, replacement, and debt expenditure for the fund. Revenue does exceed expenses for ongoing operation costs in the out-years, but this is not enough to cover the investment that will be needed to be made for the city's aging infrastructure. Next, we'll talk about Tabor, otherwise known as the Taxpayers' Bill of Rights. Tabor is a Colorado constitutional amendment that limits government revenue increases to inflation plus a small growth factor. Here's the calculation, CPI plus local growth equals allowable growth. Consumer Price Index, which is CPI, it includes common consumer spending items such as fuel, clothing, food, housing costs, et cetera. Tabor requires two limit calculations, overall revenue and property tax. On average, about 70% of the total city revenue is subject to the Tabor limit. In 2017, the voters approved retaining $12.5 million proposed refund to be used for parkland and open space, infrastructure and transportation needs, and police needs. These funds have all been spent. For the remaining years, a third of the Tabor refunds will be allocated to open space and parkland, a third to infrastructure and transportation, and a third to police. You've seen this list previously, so I'm not going to go through every item. But overall, in the last several years, the following priorities have been acquired for parkland using a variety of improvements have been done at existing facilities to improve the services provided to the community. As funds continue to be available, we anticipate more projects to be completed across the city of Lakewood Parks. For infrastructure and transportation needs related to Tabor funds are focusing towards new rather than upgrade existing infrastructure. These are a variety of sidewalk projects that have been completed and there is still a substantial amount of public requests for new sidewalks throughout the city. Several traffic signals are currently underway to improve the safety and transportation constraints in specific areas. Continued efforts are being placed to analyze the locations needed for additional infrastructure support. Over the next several years, a variety of projects related to both sidewalks and traffic signals are slated to be done. The majority of funding from Tabor available to police department is being utilized by the Body worn Camera Program. This is made up of physical body cameras, the services to maintain the raw data, and the personnel who manage the data and the program. Another continued focus is the health and wellness assessment for the police agents. This slide shows you what was historically refunded and what was transferred to the Tabor fund. The blue bars are what was refunded and the red bars is what's been retained. Tabor funds will go back to the taxpayers as of 2026 and all other funding sources will need to be identified for these programs. You'll notice that the 2020 transfer is much lower due to the requirement to have two calculations. The one that is the overall revenue and then the other is the property tax. The city did not hit the limit for overall revenue because of significantly lower revenue in 2020, but the city did hit the limit of property tax. Now, a few departments will be sharing details on the projects the staff have been working on and what is proposed in this budget. First, we'll hear from the new Public Works Director, Max Kirschbaum.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Kirschbaum. Welcome.
Okay, now I think I'm unmuted. Max Kirschbaum, Public Works Director, and if I could have the next slide, please. The next several slides will focus on the capital improvement projects. And I should note as we begin that the Capital Improvement Fund is usually general fund monies as well as some combination of other funds. Those may be Tabor, could be from CDOT through the FASTER program. It could be from the Flood District, federal matches, or a variety of grants associated. I'll point out a couple of those as we go. And projects that are in the water sewer or stormwater fund are utilities that are funded under the Enterprise Fund. So just to look back just very briefly over the past year or so, 10 projects have been completed totaling a little over $11 million. More than 7 million of that was asphalt overlays and concrete repairs as part of our street upgrades. There were also three sidewalk or path projects completed and three new or modified traffic signals. As you look at the photo on the left side, that is a new traffic signal at Union in Florida and that was also partially funded by Tabor. On the right side, you see a project on First Avenue, which was a sidewalk completion that connected to middle school. Slide please. This one, there we go. This one and the next one also show a couple other completed projects. This is a new pedestrian crossing traffic signal on Union Boulevard that also had a Tabor component. And the next slide, please. This is one of two mini-traffic circles on Green Mountain Drive, generally west of Union. Okay, if we move forward to projects that have gotten underway over this past year or so, there are, oh, let's see, did we bypass one project? Next slide. Okay, there we go. Looks like there might be some, a little bit of text missing on that, but that's okay. We have, or maybe it's a bill, there we go. A total of nine projects in design. Four of those are traffic signal replacements at seven different intersections. We have seven projects that are, have begun construction and we'll see some of those in the slides, in this slide and following slides. Totalling $5.6 million in funding, you see on the left are median improvements along Kipling and on the right, another sidewalk project on Wadsworth at about Mansfield. Slide please. Before I move into the proposed 23 budget and projects, I think it's, in terms of accountability, it's also helpful for us to discuss just for a moment projects that are, have been funded but have yet to get underway just in terms of being accountable for those projects as well. There were three projects, one for a Gulch project, water main replacement program. Both of those were, have been slowed down to, for continued analysis or additional information or for application of federal grants. The third one is Colfax Water Improvements and that has been intentionally slowed down to make sure that it's timed properly with the Colfax Avenue Safety Project. So as we move into the 23 budget as shown here on the slide, there are a total of 24 projects that are in this proposed budget, 12 for which design will get underway. And as was pointed out earlier, commitment with sidewalks and traffic signals, six of those 12 projects under design are for sidewalk and three of them are signal replacements and one new signal. On the construction side of the 23 budget, you'll see another 12 projects that will get underway for construction in the coming year. Water and Sewer Utility Projects. I mentioned a delay in some of the water projects that's contributing to that total from previous year. A couple other big ones to note are Wadsworth and Morrison Intersection. That'll be an $8 million project, again with multiple sources of funding. We will continue the rate of improvements to Lakewood Streets with $8 million for asphalt and concrete repairs to upgrade our streets. And the drainage project that you see there listed is the North Dry Gulch Project. The first phase of that is along 14th Avenue and we should see that get underway in the coming year. We are at an early stage of design at this point. And continued emphasis on transportation sidewalk projects, that 3.8 million listed on the slide is, in addition to Tabor contribution, all of that totaling nearly $30 million in project funding. Next slide, please. And as we look, just very quickly, as we look beyond the coming budget year of 2023, we look beyond that, the priorities that we'll continue to focus on here will be a replacement to our maintenance campus where our transportation, streets, fleet, and utilities sections work out of along with a portion of community resources. We'll continue to focus on the North Dry Gulch improvements. They are scheduled in multiple phases through about 2027. And as I mentioned on the earlier slide, the first phase of that construction should begin in '23 along 14th Avenue. Just to footstomp one more time, the emphasis and focus on continuation of upgrade of traffic signals and intersections, pavements and multi-use paths, as well as water and sewer main projects and a commitment to our stormwater system. And we will be moving forward with some discussions with XL on street light infrastructure. Within the past month or so, you saw an approved, a non-disclosure agreement to begin those conversations with XL. That concludes what I have to present this evening and I'd like to turn it over to Kit Newland, the Director of Community Resources. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Ms. Newland. Thank you very much. Good evening, Ms. Newland. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Council, Kit Newland, Director of Community Resources. I'll be sharing with you lots of project information similarly to what Max just did. Kit, you're muted. You're muted, Kit. Okay, sorry. I don't know how that happened. Quail Street Park is owned by Denver Water, and we are currently leasing about a half acre. We just finished a playground there, building a playground and adding it to that park, as well as adding a sidewalk on Quail Street up to 20th. So this has been a great amenity and addition for that neighborhood. Next slide. Really excited about the opening of our Morse Park Maintenance Shop. This is a shop for the staff, the park staff that work in the north side of the city where they can store their equipment. They can, they'll be housed out of these offices, and it's going to save an enormous amount of time for them going back and forth to the south shop down on Estes Street. We just completed, about in June, we completed the replacement with post-tension concrete of six more tennis courts at Lakewood Park. So all of that complex is now post-tension concrete. And we also added LED lighting to replace the old lights at that site. This project to put a new playground in at Morse Park was funded through CDVG dollars. This is quite an improvement over the playground that was there previously. This was a large project. Most of you probably saw the work going on at Edinburgh Park. It took almost a full year to complete the pond edge repair. The edging of this pond was sloughing into the water. The repairs have, have done a beautiful job of fixing that problem, and then we replaced the entire irrigation system. There's one small portion of the soccer fields on the north side that aren't quite, they're not getting water yet due to an XL meter problem, but that is getting fixed shortly, and then that water should, that, excuse me, that grass should come right back. The next project, also an irrigation one, was a completion of the Fox Hollow Golf Course Irrigation System, a huge project which is now also completed. And this is going to save about 20% in water costs. In addition, it will save a lot of staff time in the amount of repairs that they had to do to that old system. Walker Branch Park is on the northeast side of the city. It's a park that's owned in partnership with the City of Edgewater. And we recently completed a park master plan for that site due to a couple of changes that occurred over the last couple of years. One of those was that the City of Edgewater built a civic, their civic center on the north side of their park, that park, their property. And then we also, in collaboration with them, purchased an additional piece of land, the Totiev property, to add to Walker Branch. So those two changes led us to decide together that we wanted a new site plan. That has been completed, and we look forward to working with Edgewater to, to implement those plans in the near future. And you all know that we're well underway with our Imagine Tomorrow Arts Parks and Recreation for All Master Plan. We've had three public meet, well, two public meetings in one pop-up tent at the Rockin' Block, and we've gotten really great feedback from the community. We had about 100 participants show up on August 3rd to the Carmody Park meeting. And in addition to that, we had 467 people respond to the statistically valid survey, and then another 267 responded to that same survey. So we're very excited about the feedback that we're getting. It's all really good. And we're looking forward to bringing that plan to you all for adoption early next year. As most of you know, we are well underway with our Bear Creek Green Belt Trail improvements. This project includes realignment and replacement of a lot of the concrete along the Bear Creek Green Belt. It also includes the addition of a parallel soft surface trail for pedestrians and two bridge replacements, as well as an addition of a restroom at the Stone House. This is a pretty large project and will take quite some time. But when you, if you use the Green Belt, you'll know that the area that's from the Wadsworth heading to the west has been completed, a portion of it has been completed. We were fortunate to get a lot of good funding for this project. In addition to using 2.7 of our Tabor funds, we're also using Land and Water Conservation Grant in the amount of 750,000. And then we also are using open space funds, Jefferson County Open Space Funds, in the amount of 1.9 million. And this is a picture of some of the soft surface trails at Peak View Park. This is the Morrison and Wadsworth Park. We finally are well underway on construction of this park. And you'll see trucks if you go by there and a lot of other work that's going on. So the staff, the in-house staff, built this, these soft surface trails over the spring and summer. And then the hard surface trail is currently under construction, and that will be going around the perimeter of the park while the soft surface trails will be going up around through the interior of the park. And then also we'll have a restroom and a parking lot up near Morrison Road at the entry to the park. Here are several multiple projects that are currently underway. I just wanted to mention what's upcoming with these. Taft Park will be getting a playground, Harrison Park, a shelter and a playground. We're underway with Two Creeks Park Site Plan as well as Wright Park Site Plan. We're replacing, under construction currently, we're replacing tennis courts at Westboro, Lasley, and Okane Parks. And we're adding, and also currently under construction, are six new pickleball courts with lights at Carmody Park. We have four NPP projects that we're working on with Jeffco Schools that I wanted to mention. One of these, Mulhome, we know that, that, that particular school is, is being considered for closing. So we're, we'll wait a little longer to find out what happens with that. But otherwise, we're moving these projects. They're all in different stages of completion or underway. There's two other NPP projects I wanted to mention. One is the Weir Gulch under Wadsworth, the, the underpass that goes under Wadsworth by Belmar Park. That is an Alameda bid NPP project, and it's also under, under construction now. They're putting in lights and murals on the walls. And then lastly, on the NPPs, I wanted to mention, next slide, please, the West Colfax Sculpture Walk. We're just, we're really happy with the way this project turned out. We had such great collaborative effort and really great volunteers to help. This was a collaboration between ED, LRA, Community Resources, the West Colfax Bid, the West Colfax Community Association, all worked together to make this come together. And our parks planning staff did the design, and then community volunteers came out two weekends and did all the, the heavy lifting, really literally heavy lifting with all the rocks that they needed to move. This is a great transformation of this corner, and we're really hopeful that we will see it this way for a long time into the future. Then I wanted to mention some future planning, some future planning projects and some large infrastructure projects. We are going to be embarking on a master plan for Bear Creek Lake Park starting next year. Heritage Lakewood Belmar Park Master Plan has been completed, and we hope to start implementing that plan next year. That'll involve a lot of updated signage and landscaping. Hopefully, we'll be replacing the, the main sign to the park at Ohio and Wadsworth. Porter Park is our newest, our new park site, which is in the northwest part of the city at 731 Tabor Street. It's a 7.7 acre site. We will begin public engagement on that site next year, and then hopefully we'll do construction in '24. We just recently realized that with the demand that we're hearing from people in our master plan process, how much people want dog, dog parks, we realized that this new acquisition at the Wadsworth Trailhead or near the trailhead allows us the opportunity to potentially add a dog park there that could be as large as eight acres. So we're getting, so far, we're getting lots of good feedback from the public, and that will be under consideration in the upcoming months. And then you'll hear more about that during our master plan process. The William Frederick Hayden Park Plan will be a trail, trail design plan. We hope to embark on that late next year or early in '24. Morris Park Pool is one of those infrastructure issues. It's, it's, it's aged past its useful life. It needs to be completely taken out and rebuilt. So we'll be looking at doing that in '24 with planning and public engagement next year. And then a couple of other large infrastructure projects. One is Carmody Pool, which we've been planning for, and we hope to be, be able to start work on Carmody Pool next, next, I mean, this year, next year, excuse me. That project will involve shell replacement, underwater light replacement, chemical feed replacement, filtration systems, garage doors, and quite a few other amenities that need to be replaced at Carmody Pool. Concrete also needs to be replaced. So that'll involve a large, a large amount of time, and we will keep people informed about when closure needs to occur. And we have several other planned projects that are coming up. One that I wanted to highlight is the Observation Deck at Belmar Park. That will be replaced. You can go back to the other slide. That, that will be replaced in 2023 as well. That'll also be a very large project, but it'll be a big improvement. That, that structure is very aged and needs to be replaced. And then same with the Patterson Head Start cottages. We've already renovated one of those cottages, and planning is underway to renovate the next one. That renovation should be occurring in '23 and maybe early into '24. But those facilities are heavily used by our Head Start families, and we're, we're very happy to be able to get them brought up to, to speed for those families. Okay, next slide. The map on the right shows you where the new acquisitions are. But before I touch on that, I was going to just mention briefly the park improvements that are underway in which we are using Tabor dollars. And right now, those are the Bear Creek Green Belt Trail and Peak View Park. And then the, the upcoming projects that we'll be using Tabor refund dollars for are Morse Park Pool, Wright Park, and Porter Park. Excuse me, Wright Park is about 10 acres, and it's almost completely undeveloped. So it's going to be a really great addition to that area, which is pretty high density, a lot of, a lot of older, older individuals and then young adults who live there. So we're very excited about that. And then Porter Park, of course, our new addition to the system. And you can see that highlighted here in the northwest on the map. And then I wanted to just briefly, Holly already mentioned the acquisitions, but just a couple of other notes about the acquisitions. The three properties along the Green Belt. The addition of the Totiev property was to Walker Branch Park, way up in the northeast. We added a car, that we bought the car wash, it's still sitting there, but we will, it'll be demoed in the next few months, the car wash that's on Wadsworth. That'll be in addition to Two Creeks Park, Porter Park I just mentioned, and then Soda Lakes. That's our most recent addition of acquisition, and that was actually 37 acres that we'll be adding at Soda Lakes to Bear Creek Lake Park. That's a total that have been purchased with Tabor dollars of almost 60 acres. And then at Peak View Park, which is, Peak View is about 60 acres. So the total between the two of those is almost 120 acres that we've gained to our park system. 60 of those because of the money that we got from the Tabor refund dollars. So however, these parks do require maintenance to different degrees depending on what types of amenities they have. But we've done calculations based on what we anticipate will be going in these parks. And we're current dollars, we're expecting additional maintenance as well as ranger cost to be approximately $94,000 a year. And those costs continue to go up every year. So just something to keep in mind as we acquire property, that maintenance goes on forever. Okay, next slide, please. And since our department is responsible for infrastructure of all city buildings, not just community resources buildings, and these projects have already been touched on a little bit, but I wanted to mention the Quail Street Shop improvements. The primary project at the Quail Street Shops is a replacement of the wall that houses the block, block heaters for the snowplows, which is why that wall is so important. It was starting to fail. And now the, the project is on track to begin in May of next year. There were a few complications with, with XL that postponed it a little bit, but we do now have a date, May, that we'll, we'll be able to start on that. The staff have done a great job getting the, the wall prepared so that it can function during this next winter season. And then the next three projects are all projects related to infrastructure, large infrastructure systems that, that we need to continue to invest in because of the, the fact that this is not a growth, growth city anymore. It's an established city, as Holly mentioned earlier. These first four bullets here, these projects were all funded through the American Rescue Funds, and then the emergency radio system was funded separately with general fund dollars. And then continuing on the infrastructure, aging infrastructure. These are, this is a list of some of the aging infrastructure issues that need, buildings that need addressing in our system, not just buildings, but issues, because you can see park irrigation systems, path lights, shelters. Restrooms are huge on citizens' requests. People like to have new restrooms or functioning, nice restrooms, and that's something that we haven't been able to address, and we need to. So I just wanted to highlight for all of you the fact that, as Holly's already mentioned, that investment will need to be made into the future. And as she noted, we do have a building assessment underway that our outside consultant is currently assessing our 12 busiest and largest facilities. And they'll be identifying structural and system replacement issues, conditions basically, such as the roofs, the electrical plumbing, HVAC systems, fire protection furnishings, pavement, floorings, and utilities. So when, we do expect to have that assessment of those first 12 buildings at the end of this year, and at that time, we'll be able to start discussing, putting together a plan. The CFL, Owen and I have been working on this together, and we expect to put our heads together, along with the rest of our teams, to figure out how we can try to make some, some investments into the future so our facilities can continue to serve our citizens. And with that, I would like to introduce, introduce Ed Lor, our interim police chief. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Great presentation. Chief Lor, good evening. Welcome.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Hey, good evening once again. Ed Lor, I am the interim chief of police, and I'm going to give you a snapshot, an overview of a few of our programs that we are currently in place and using at the police department. We'll look at the LEAD program, the Body worn Cameras, Homeless Population Co-Responder Programs, and there's several within that group. Next slide, please. Let's touch briefly on the LEAD program. This is the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program. This purpose of this program is really to divert people whose problems are driven by alcohol, drugs, mental health, poverty-related, and we're trying to divert them out of the judicial system. A lot of our municipal courts, county courts are just overwhelmed with this population. So this LEAD program does just that. It diverts these folks from the judicial system, hopefully to get them into some sort of a long-term, non-coercive case management program. As you can see, it's grant-funded. We've got 311 total contacts currently, or in this first year, and currently we have 15 active participants in this program. Next slide, please. Body worn cameras, very popular topic. We're all aware that body worn cameras are mandated by law to be in effect by to be in effect by July of 2023. I'm really proud this department stepped up and got this program in place 14 months in advance of the mandates that the legislatures put before us. As you can see, there's, there's some startup costs with this, $800,000 for equipment. Oh, that includes the charging stations, body worn cameras themselves, hardware that goes into that. We're also looking at various storage and cloud type based products. So a lot, once again, and just equipment startup. And then the personnel. We have currently in our redaction or our body worn camera review team, one sergeant, three full time individuals and one variable. And as this continues to increase, so will the need for personnel. Mention is this slide shows we did in our startup process receive $240,000 in grants to offset some of those hardware or the equipment costs that were mentioned. As we move on, as this program continues, we'll be at least anticipating at least a $1.2 million equipment, maintenance and personnel costs on an annual basis. Currently, as this program is now in full swing, we have 300 cameras out in the field with our patrol agents, personnel as well as our court marshals. Next slide, please. These are the few programs I had mentioned earlier, but the homeless population cold responder programs. The first program I want to talk about is the Advanced Resource Medic or Arm Car Partnership. This is, this is a great, great partnership we have with West Metro Fire. It's our urgent care on wheels. And what we do is we combine our resources from the CAT team, our co responders, our mental health caseworkers, our navigators. We go out and take basically the services to our, our population that needs them out there. And this is the same population that could, as I talked about before, can really overwhelm the system with calls for service as well as other services. We're able to take treatments to these individuals out there in the road and defer and allow our patrol officers and other first responders to deal with other situations before them. As you can see, 179 treatments year to date. This is a grant funded program and it's really gaining a lot of traction where West Metro has renewed that grant. So we're going to continue in this program as long as it's allowed and we'll, we'll see where it leads to. Once again, our co responders, Jefferson Center for Mental Health. They're involved in a lot of crisis intervention, helping take that load off of our officers, helping people with basic needs and assessments. We had 701 contacts, 2021 through this July. It should be noted, we only had one co responder during the majority of that time. So as we now have two onboard and potentially more to come, I think we'll start seeing those contacts increase and the services even, even magnified. So that's a good thing. And then we have our two full time homeless navigators. They're funded through our department. They work with our emergent or episodic and our chronic homeless individuals. Wow, look at those stats, over 3,200 homeless contacts in the last two years. They are just absolutely priceless when it comes to what they provide for us. And once again, how they defer our officers from having to deal with that population. So more to come with, with this program because it's, it's, it's quite a success for us. Next slide. And with that, I want to go ahead and turn it over and introduce our planning department director, Mr. Travis Parker.
Great. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Parker. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry. Wasn't sure anybody could hear me. I had the chief mentioned, I'm Travis Parker with the planning department and good news is I'm the last department director you hear from tonight and also that my I have the fewest number of slides. So I'm going to talk tonight about some of the things going on in the planning department, including our work with the unhoused population, some progress we've made with the neighborhood support team and some of the things that we're doing in sustainability. So starting with unhoused, one of the things in this year's, but additions in this year's budget is a new position of a homeless coordinator. This is a position, we're actually going through interviews this week for this new position who will be responsible for a lot of coordination of homeless service efforts throughout the city of Lakewood. A large part of that will be homeless site cleanup. So this person will work to identify efficiencies in the system, existing things that are being done, ways that we can do things better and to coordinate better across multiple departments. Right now, the city is spending over a quarter, quarter million dollars a year on homeless site cleanup. And we expect that only to rise in the future. So this homeless coordinator position can, I think, coordinate those efforts and find some efficiencies in those processes. Another big effort that we're doing in this area is looking for a homeless navigation center. Right now we're in the site selection phase of that process. Once we find that site, we'll be looking at entitlement, purchase of the site and then working through the construction and occupancy phase. Next, I want to talk about the neighborhood support team. This includes this is, actually, this is our new neighborhood support coordinator, Trevor Wolfson, who is coordinating these projects. He is responsible for mediation of neighborhood disputes, facilitation of one time projects, a lot of services for neighborhoods in Lakewood and HOAs. Two of the main thing that he's been working on include the next slide, which are the creation of the Lakewood Mediation Services program. So with COVID, Jeffco shut down their mediation services. And so for a year or two, those services didn't exist in Lakewood or in Jefferson County. Trevor has restarted that program and to date, we have 29 referrals for mediation within Lakewood and currently have 10 open mediation cases going on right now. So we have, and we have a roster of five volunteer mediators that I believe all of whom worked with Jeffco Mediation Services prior to its dissolution. So that program is going very well, growing very fast. There's, there's clearly a lot of response in the community for the provision of these, a need in the community for the provision of these services. Also, Trevor is working on a new program, the Neighborhood Get Together Grant on the next slide. This is a grant of between $100 and $500 to local Lakewood neighborhoods. Launched, launched just a month or two ago and already we've had eight grants approved. Actually, as of today, we have 16 requests for grants totaling $6,400. These grants can fund neighborhood gatherings, neighborhood events, pay for food, drink, that sort of thing. The picture on the screen is the Horseshoe Neighborhood at Athan Sims. This is their annual neighborhood block party. And this program contributed the food and drink for this party. So it's been a in, in its very short life, it's been a very successful and high demand neighborhood grant already. So something we're, we're really excited to, to talk about. Finally, tonight, I want to talk about some of our sustainability efforts. As you all know, our sustainability team always has a ton to do and a lot of projects on the go. Just a few of those are highlighted on this slide. You were all involved earlier in the year in passing changes to Article 13, which include an enhanced, enhanced development menu, a lot of changes to that, greenhouse gas standards for new construction and the like. So a lot of positive changes in the zoning code in Article 13. This budget also that you're considering tonight also includes a new position in planning to help review those developments, review sustainable developments and review all new developments in Lakewood for the sustainability requirements of Article 13. For energy and water conservation, a lot of projects going on right now. Staff is working on an energy and water resource center that includes resources for Lakewood residents, a low income resource guide that helps low income families lower their energy and water bills. They've got a partnership with the Mile High Youth Corps to help low income households lower their water bills as well as working on residential outdoor water conservation plan. And this includes a variety of measures, including turf replacement and other water conservancy measures in residential areas. And then final, not the final thing they're working on, but certainly the final example I'm talking about tonight has to do with energy conservation. Lakewood is working on a small business outreach campaign. They've already visited 250 local businesses to promote free energy assessments and LED services and, and energy savings through Excel programs. So a ton going on in our sustainability division right now and always more new and exciting projects for them. So that's a quick rundown of some of the exciting things going on in planning and I will now turn it back to your finance director, Holly Bjorkman.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone can hear me? Okay, so this is the end of our presentation for the city budget. The next meeting on the budget will be September 28th with the Budget Not at Board. Then October 3rd will be the first public hearing and October 17th will be the second public hearing. And finally, I wanted to give thanks and introduce the Budget Not at Board members. We have the city council, councillor Wendy Strum, who is the chair of the Budget Not at Board. The citizen members are Christopher Scott, Marlon McDaniel and Deborah Hensbark. The other council members are Mayor Protam Sharon Vincent and City Councillor Rebecca Stewart. Thank you for your insight and discussion on the city finances. I also want to say thank you for all of you of questions we have received from both city council and the Budget and Audit Board. So now I will turn it over to councillor Strum as the chair of the Budget Not at Board. She would like to make a few comments.
Thank you, Holly. So for everybody listening tonight or on YouTube tomorrow and thereafter, just a couple of words about who the Budget Not at Board is. We're basically designed to be the financial oversight committee. I'm honored to be the chair this year. It's really been a great opportunity to learn so much more about Lakewood finances. So very excited for that. For those of you that are familiar with Budget Not at, the Budget Not at Board, we are changing slightly our process this year with this process in the past. At this meeting tonight is when we as a board would come with our formal recommendations and thoughts with regards to the budget. That has changed this year. The original intention was that, but we had our meeting scheduled last week that did not get posted in accordance to Colorado state law. So we have changed the way we are going to be doing that because of the accidental oversight. That has actually turned into an opportunity, I believe, for the Budget Not at Committee to come to our meeting tonight to hear more about our questions and concerns. And really after hearing all of our department heads, see this budget come to life. I mean, it's one thing to open up this and see 349 pages of lots of numbers. But staff did an amazing job of not only putting all this together and putting it in so much of it in alignment with council, with council, what council had really been wanting to work hard on this year. So I'm really excited for the opportunity that now Budget Not at Board gets to get together. Next week we'll digest and process, I think, with a much richer conversation. And then we'll return on October 3rd with our actual recommendations to city council. So that's what you can expect from us going forward. As the Budget Not at Board, I would like to say collectively from all of us, a thank you to Holly and Shane for your, all the time that you've spent with some of us that are newer and some of us that are older but may have lots of questions. Thank you so much for all of your time that you've committed to answer those questions for us. And then for all staff, all of the hours, as our city manager Kathy Hodson pointed out earlier in our meeting, there countless hours went in to putting together this budget. Again, numbers over here, but now we're hearing the life stories around it. So we want to thank all of you. And I do have, we've got our three community committee members on tonight, Deb Hensbark and Chris, I saw you in here somewhere, and Marlon McDaniel. If either of you would like to say a word, now is your time if you do have anything to say. I'm not sure that we do. So we'll just give pause and if you do, we don't have hands to raise. So it's a little, or do we have hands to raise? Yes, we do. There we go.
Mr. McDaniel, do you, go ahead, sir. Welcome.
Hi, thanks, council, Mr. Mayor and team for, for the presentation tonight. Just brief remarks, I, I've been in in Shane's seat. I've, I've been through budget development processes with Holly as well. It takes hundreds of hours to prepare these plans, these strategic operating plans with their department liaisons and partners over the course of the year. So quite a solid effort by the, by the teams, all teams involved in this to, to pull together a comprehensive budget that informs how Lakewood, Lakewood's taxpayers' dollars are funding critical improvements in the community. So thank you guys for, for being stewards of our taxpayer dollars here.
Okay.
Oh, you're on.
Yeah. Mr. Scott and Miss Hensbark, do you have anything? And certainly as we go into the, the questions phase, please feel free to jump in as things come up too. Mr. Scott, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm just very grateful to be here. My family's lived in Lakewood for over 12 years. Grateful to be a part of supporting what the staff do. I do have a couple of questions I was not able to contribute to the original collection. I'm happy to ask them now or I'm happy to hold them for another time.
Oh, if, please feel free to ask and certainly if we can get them tonight, we will. And if not, we'll add them to that list and make sure we send it back out. So the floor is yours. Mr. Scott, are you there?
I am. Give me one second. I'm improving my internet connection. Hang on, please.
Okay, you're good.
Thank you. I stepped away from my children and didn't realize I left my hotspot behind. My bad. My questions are surrounding fund balances. Looking at both the financial policies of the city and then how the fund balances are changing across funds and year over year. I'm curious about the process for the staff requesting permission to access fund balance. And if that can't be answered, not I understand, but it's just a question to ask.
Ms. Bjorkman, is that something you can address?
Yes. So being able to utilize fund balance is done in two ways. One is through the normal budget process in which the department directors or staff to department directors identify projects that are what they would like to put into the budget. And so that's done during the budget process. An entire list is provided from each department prioritized and matched to what the priorities are from city council. And then that's evaluated through a process of meetings of reviewing with the city manager and identifying which are the priorities. If something is not included in the budget and it's more of a supplemental question that wants or item that people want to utilize the fund balance. the um fund balance, it it is done through a supplemental process in which they review with finance and then review with the city manager. And then it's brought to city council if it warrants uh requesting that. Um, and the intent is for both the budget process and for the supplemental process is that is evaluated with all the other needs of the city versus evaluated as its own individual item. Does that answer the question?
It does, thank you so much, and thank you again for letting me be here.
Great, thank you, Mr. Scott. Ms. Hensbark, welcome. Should be ready to speak.
There we go, I'm trying, I'm working on it, sorry. I was, I was clicking the little red thing instead of up to the blue thing. Anyway, sorry, uh, I'm, I'm one of the newbies on the committee and I wanted to to ditto uh Councilman Strom's uh thank you for all the time that Heather and um, excuse me, not Heather, Ms. Bjorkland uh and uh Shane have spent with us on on this during this period of time transition and trying to get to understand everything. Um, and I want to say that in my forty years of working in government finance, I have never seen a group of uh department directors who so clearly understood how they were spending their money and where their money was coming from. I'm pretty impressed, so thanks for letting me be here tonight, too.
Fantastic, well, that's uh certainly appreciated. And and I know Ms. Hossen kind of started out with with talking about uh the budget and the ease of of this and all of her tenure. And honestly, I've sat through a lot of these presentations and the amount of detail and the clarity that was provided was was the the best I've seen in in my tenure as both a council member and mayor. So hats off. And uh it's always a a busy process and, you know, year after year, we have different budgets. You know, some have a lot of fun, exciting new things, and and some just have kind of the basic police parks, potholes. And this has a little bit of a mix of everything as we are a community that has a lot of pressures and changing needs. And so with that, I would like to open up council's questions. And again, we will uh try to address them the best we can tonight. If not, we'll keep those tallies moving forward. And I'd like to go through uh council with one or two questions and then uh we can circle back around. So Ms. Sharzai, you are first.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Um, Ms. Bjorkland, I have a question about slide nineteen. Um, you have sales tax from groceries at fifteen percent. And I under, as I understand it, we don't collect that, so I know there's some exceptions for that. And just wondering if you could talk a little bit more uh about what would be included in that. And then I also was curious, where does marijuana sales tax show up in that bar graph? Is it in groceries? And then I'll stop there.
Uh, so in terms of groceries, uh, that includes the um things that are not actually food. So we do charge tax for things that are not actually food. Um, and for marijuana, I think I will have to get back to you on that one. I believe that's, yeah, I I think I better get the right answer before I answer. And uh Shane can look into it and we might be able to answer it tonight, we'll see.
Great, thank you.
Sure. So I don't have any other hands up, I just had a quick, oh, there's a, there's a hand. And I'll go there then, Ms. Mayat Guerrero and then Ms. Springsteen.
Um, yeah, I think that my question is sort of more conceptual and I I flagged it for Kathy earlier. But I think if if there needs to be like additional follow-up or another conversation, um, that that's totally fine. But I think, you know, I'm really, I'm obviously pleased that the police programs like LEAD and Coresponders CAT are also happening. Um, you know, they're reflected on this budget, so you don't see them as like the primary points of of growth in the budget. And then I think where we see the response to our increasing homeless community really is within um, yeah, within our planning department, which I think, you know, is a is a great fit to try to make that cross-departmental response. And you really see that um reflected in the budget. But I think my my question is sort of like, how beyond sort of that, like that role, right? Um, either within police or community resource or planning, like, are people expecting to see um like a continued increase in in the budget there? And like, is that reflected here? Um, and like, and if not, then like, does it need to be? Because I I was, I really do think that once we have this role filled and we're able to really make sure that we're hearing from all of the departments, like in a more cohesive way on their on their needs in terms of responding to homeless folks, that like, it probably will turn out that we have some shortages in some places. And so I don't know that we can fully predict that during budget season right now. But sort of what's what's kind of the approach and thinking on that?
Thank you. Ms. Hudson, is that?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Holly to respond to that. It it is a a centralized slash decentralized program as it relates to the position you spoke of. And then the funding is decentralized. Holly, can you speak a little bit more to that? We talked about that this afternoon.
Yes, so um as uh you, just to make sure I'm understanding the questions, you're asking about what are the sources for the homeless um uh cleanup area? Is that the question?
Well, I think yes, for for cleanup, that's like the biggest thing, right? I think that one of the complaints we all get a lot and something that affects both housed and unhoused people is just like the amount of trash and like what to do about it. But my 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 point is more like, I imagine that once we have a person in this role that's really dedicated to that type of coordination that we end as we all continue to really like dig in on responding to a growing homeless population, like, that there will be the potential for other types of expenses or that that might even just cost more, like both in terms of trash. But then I think, you know, ob- obviously things like bathrooms, hygiene, water are all also things that are coming up for folks. Um, and so just, I I think that that's like a whole space of response and like a whole, really like in a part of our city that is, has grown. And so like, how how are we sort of approaching both like that cleanup that's in this moment that we're preparing to respond to? But then kind of a little bit more, um, I guess like philosophically in terms of just expecting that to have to be a nimble, continued budgetary conversation.
Um, thank you, let me, let me take a run at that. So that's actually accurate. What we're hoping to do is to be really nimble. And once we're setting up this program um to under, as it's underway, to kind of grow it as we see what that need is. So right now, what we have funded is what was funded last year. And that is the the actual costs that has been associated with those different departments like Community Resources, uh Police Department and Public Works. So the idea here is to start to build this program and to um as it's becoming real, to really learn what those costs are gonna be and to start adjusting upwards. So you will most likely see a request for increased funding for the following year, either um twenty-three revised or at twenty-four budget. Once we see really, once this whole program is up and and rolling.
And just to add to that, um, so as Travis Parker had mentioned, we do um spend about two hundred and fifty thousand um a year currently. And it's in those areas that Kathy was talking about. Um, uh, that it's the Police Department, it's um Community Resources and uh Public Works that are um providing those services today. So we just need to expand that if we expand the the resources of what we're doing.
Fabulous, thank you so much. Uh, Mayor, is it okay if I continue on the same sort of thread? So I think sort of speaking of this, and I I also, I just want to back up for a second and say that this budget is a very compelling document. I feel like I have stared at this state budget in various capacities of my life and then been in positions where I'm personally managing like much smaller uh budget in a professional capacity. Um, but this budget really having the beginning that has the narrative and talks through all of the like priorities that then you get to see reflected. I just wanted to say as somebody who's learning this budget process this year, that was incredibly helpful formatting and really, really thoughtful. And the approach really made a giant arduous document a lot easier to like sink my teeth into. So I just wanted to say thank you for the committee and the staff on that. Um, which is why now I'm able to, you know, just ask very aggressive questions, so appreciate it. Um, so my other question is sort of in that same line, right? We're seeing these resources um be used oft- often in the police. But, you know, I think that a lot of those programs are really innovative. And, you know, we've seen some studies uh uh in Denver specifically, which is obviously very different than Lakewood and other parts of the country that have shown that, you know, getting shelters together where we're having more housing, that uh programs like LEAD, Coresponders actually ultimately do save money. And while I recognize that we probably don't have like a clear like dollar for dollar understanding, I am wondering, especially given the like continued uh issue we're having with getting our police staffed up, are we thinking or has there been any discussion about that that staffing shortage might be permanent, right? It might just be hard to hire enough people to like get us where we need to be in this like post-pandemic world? Um, and therefore, does it make sense then to be thinking about the expansion of those types of programs which can relieve, like LEAD, like CAT, like Coresponders, that can relieve the pressure on some of our like more traditional policing and really have all of that be underneath public safety? I just wonder if that's a discussion that's been coming up.
Kathy, did you want me to answer that?
Um, yes, Holly, would you take a run at that, please? Thanks.
Yes, so during um the budget discussions, that's actually a topic that came up with um the PD discussion. Uh, that um because of the challenge, not just because of the challenges that we have with hiring um uh police agents, but it's also uh because of the direction that Lakewood's trying to move towards as being a supportive um agency. Uh, and uh which they do today, but as the world is changing, as you had mentioned, moving more towards these supportive type roles, that means we're hiring different types of people. So um part of that discussion with the um uh the police chief was um how how do we move towards that? And what are the things we need in order to move towards it? What are the resources that are needed for that?
And with this, so sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just mean, would this budget allow for that type of nimbleness and discussion on that? Or I know that the staffing, um, you know, line items are are more specific than like the other types of of components in the budget.
So that's part of the reason that we're recommending that there are ten positions that are left vacant so that we have um that flexibility that if something um comes up that we really need to get a resource now that we didn't really think about during that process, um, uh, it would be available for us to um for the city to be able to fund.
So the budget as written still is like holding out hope that we will hire the same traditional police agents that we haven't been able to?
Uh, Kathy, did you want to answer that?
Um, yeah, yeah, so the budget does allow for the same level of funding for the police personnel. Um, I I think it's important to mention that a lot of these coresponder kind of um employees in in that program area, if you will, um many of those are funded by grants. And we have a pretty aggressive grant writer in specific for the Police Department who um is always seeking grants to help enrich these programs. So that would be, that could happen anytime throughout the year. As you know, it has happened of over the last couple of years. For example, the LEAD professional is funded by a grant program. Since that came off-cycle, if you will, that was a program that came in front of city council mid-year. Um, it was approved and so that individual was hired and the program was underway. So we anticipate a continuation of this grants partnerships, if you will, um for these kind of programs.
Thank you both so much for tuning in through with me. I'm I'm done with that line of questioning, thanks, Mayor.
Which, but to follow up, if if I might, on Ms. Mayat Guerrero, the the question of if we do have flexibility, as for instance, we're putting together in the planning department, we'll have a kind of whole citywide type coordinator. And if programs come to be that um seem to fit into the goals of this council as far as these different programs, there is the ability for you to come back to council and and talk about, you know, funding a program or funding these types of things moving forward. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. That's part of that supplemental process that we talked about that you can add to the budget.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Springsteen.
Thank you, I have uh questions for um the three of our department heads, Ms. Bjorkland. Um, so one thing that came up earlier in the year is that some of these surveys that we take are taken primarily by our white population in Lakewood. And so we have um a situation where there is and and this is a question, there appears to be zero budget toward making things more inclusive and less discriminatory, particularly with our hiring processes in the city of Lakewood. And um I think evidence of this is some of our recent hires in terms of um our city attorney, municipal judge, public works, you name it, um, not people of color. Um, and, you know, we have an opportunity to hire a new police chief who could perhaps be a person of color or a woman of color if she's qualified, as the city manager said to me. Um, but I I was just wondering about why we don't have any budget set aside for that particular issue. I have two more questions and then and then I'll let um everybody answer. With regard to uh the police budget, I wanted to mention that there was a Stanford uh study that said that that studied the STAR program in Denver, the Support Team Assistance Response Program that has been so successful. And I heard about numerous times in Washington at the National League of Cities Conference because we're famous across the nation for that program. And the STAR program has tried many times to come into Lakewood. And what the, what the study found is that it has reduced um costs to cities in terms of of crime. Let's see, the exact language, um, shows how effective the program was in reducing low-level crime and the cost of responding to certain calls during its initial six-month pilot. And um, so uh coresponder programs have been found to be not as effective, but we seem to be very um uh uh intent on sticking with these coresponder programs. So that is my question um for uh Chief Lor is why we, why we can't consider uh the STAR program here in Lakewood to save on our budget. And then finally, I wanted to ask about um the Public Works, and we're talking about upgrade to streets. So recently, in my neighborhood, uh, we had an overhaul of the streets. And it did not particularly fix uh any of the cracks in the streets, but we painted the streets black and they look really pretty. Um, but that, that's my question in re, in regard to eight million dollars set aside for this kind of thing. Why are we not getting reports as a city council on the usefulness of what we are doing with regard to our public works? Thank you.
All right, Ms. Hudson, do you want to quarterback that?
Um, yes, I'm happy to, thank you, councillor Springsteen, thank you for the question. So first, I'm gonna bring our um HR director, Corey Peterson, on the screen. Um, because the question was about hiring practices. So I don't see him yet, but I know he's in the waiting room.
So he'll address the first question. Um. Also, the Imagine Lakewood um was a statistically valid survey and was mailed appropriately to our demographic. So I can ask Kit Newland, if you want more detail, I we can provide information. We can write something up on that and provide it to city council before the first hearing. Let's see, does anybody see Cory? Here's Cory. Cory, can you please address the first question? And you're muted. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you very much for the question. Um, the city of Lakewood actually does a I I feel a pretty good job of reaching out to the minority community. We do a number of targeted advertisements among both Spanish speaking and Vietnamese speaking um language publications in order to get some of our higher priority positions out there. Um, we obviously also are completely online and open to applications from across the Lakewood community and are really looking for um a number of people to apply for jobs. I think we have over 40 open currently. So we welcome a diverse community of applicants and we certainly take a look at everybody's qualifications and suitability for the uh jobs. Does that answer the question?
Um, yes, thank you. Now, as it relates
Well, actually
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you give me some demographics on um on the percentage of people of color that we have working for the city of Lakewood?
We certainly have those. I don't have them off the top of my head and in front of me, but I can certainly get those back to you. Absolutely.
And and have we tried different methods of um eliciting different applications from from different sort of demographics of people, or do we do the same thing every time?
We do a variety of different uh ways of trying to get our our message out there that there's open jobs. Um, we do online publications, we do some print stuff. Um, we certainly do targeted emails out. We have LinkedIn. Um, we share jobs through LinkedIn and have uh other employees share that with their networks. So we're really doing everything we can to try and get the number of uh uh positions out there and and applicants in just due to the number of um people that we have where there's shortfalls on positions inside the city.
And so you don't really have an idea of what the percentage of African Americans or Hispanics working for the city is at this point in time?
I mean, I would make a guess, but I don't want to make a guess in a public forum, so I'll certainly get those and we'll put those on the list of questions back out to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I think the last the last was uh in pertaining to streets and I would just also re emphasize that every year we do receive a in depth memo all the city council about the projects for paving, resurfacing, uh fog coating, the different methods that they utilize for our roads and why and how. And so we could try to find that and send that back out. I just looked for it, but council receives that every year along with the priority list.
And the other question was the STAR program for Chief Lor.
Uh, yeah, so um interim chief Ed for Chief Lor, you're right, is prepared to respond. There he is. Thanks, Ed.
Right, you're very welcome, and good evening, Councilor Springsteen. Uh, yeah, you know, we're not we're not opposed to looking at the STAR program. Uh, it's seen some good successes down in Denver. I won't disagree with that. Uh, similar concept where they're pairing up paramedics and they're uh uh along with your first um co responder um mental health worker. Uh, they're going to other kind of situations. Uh, I think our program is much along the lines of start small, think big. I look at the STAR program and that's a $2.4 million funded program through Denver. Uh, both their supplemental funds as well as uh foundations. I don't think we're there yet, uh not only um and and we got to understand that our co responders, we only had one up to just a few months ago, we have two now. And we're hoping to get a few more on. Those are those are co responders that are given to us through um Jefferson Center for Mental Health. So uh we're kind of working with them on that and doing it on on a very tight if um if uh no budget because they're funding it for us. So um, once again, we're just in its infancy and we're just trying to work through some of the the growing pains with the very beginnings of a project such as this one.
So so Chief Lor, would you be willing to talk to the people from STAR because I know they have been reaching out over the past couple of years and um as far as funding goes, I know that um uh if we're reducing low level crime, we're we're saving, we're saving money in another way. So is there a way to sort of look at that within the budget?
The the budget I won't be able to comment on right now, but I'll certainly talk to anybody that can help us reduce crime and take some of the load off of our officers on the streets. So sure, I'll be happy to talk with anybody from the STAR program.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And also I would just uh state that the sheriff's department and unfortunately, we ran out of time at the last commissioner and council members breakfast. But the sheriff's department has been starting to look at this type of program countywide. And uh there was a request that we continue to engage in that. I know some of the council members participate in that conversation. And so hopefully that'll be another parallel response because we're not the only city in Jefferson County certainly looking at these types of issues. So Councilor Strong.
Thank you. I actually have a follow up question to that. With the West Metro ARM program that has emergency response medical, I don't know if they have behavioral, but my question would be how similar is the ARM program maybe to the STAR program?
And good evening, counselor. Yeah, that's exactly right. It is a much smaller program. Uh, but it does team up West Metro Fire with uh our co responders and mental health workers. Um, anybody we can get to go out to include the CAT team. So we've got a lot of folks taking it to our homeless population. Um, where they live, where they reside, where where we can reach them and get them the uh uh resources that they need. So but once again, I think it's a smaller basis, but I uh we can certainly grow. Uh, the need is is there. It's just a matter of uh working through those growing pains.
Okay. I have a quick question and oh, Ms. Bjorkland, go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up on the question that Counselor Sharzai asked about marijuana. Um, that's actually included in the grocery category.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I I certainly don't need an answer for this and I I know, you know, there's some there's some things related to Bear Creek Lake Park and it looks like we're looking at doing a master plan and and maybe there's an advantage to doing that to to continue with the compelling uh response from the community as to what's what could be proposed there. Just curious if that's something that is is continue, if we should continue to move forward with something like that while there is some influx with uh the the studies with the federal government, which could take a long, long time also, right? None none of that would move very fast. So uh Ms. Newland, if you want to address it, that's fine. We can address it later, too.
Um, actually, we debated that for a while, knowing that we have the water um storage issue to deal with. However, we feel like we can go through with the master plan because there we need to address some pretty severe, serious needs out there. And that aren't the areas that aren't necessarily impacted by the additional water storage. So what we want to do is have um a here's what the plan will be and then another, you know, aside, another plan that would be if we get this much water storage, it'll be you know, here's what change in the plan. So sort of like two separate documents that would provide us those options.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. I have Ms. Stewart and then I if there's anybody else on this first round and then I can circle back to seconds, which would be Ms. Springsteen. Go ahead, Ms. Stewart.
Thanks. Uh, we've been kind of talking with regards to a few different pieces of the budget about the nimbleness of the funds. Um, I know I had a specific question about the potential in the budget for as we're kind of looking at repaving in public works and working on our bicycle master plan, the potential for including some uh protection in some of those bike lanes. And I know that there's nothing specifically allocated for any specific projects, but I'm just kind of curious if we did in the future, in the next year, do some sort of um a study to identify the best places for that to go, if that is included in um potential projects, is there the ability for us to be again, kind of nimble with those funds based on um direction from council or um new information?
Thank you. Ms. Bjorkland or Ms. Hodgson?
Um, I I can take around at that. As it relates specifically to your question, um we have, we do have and are seeing conflict on our on our roads as it relates to vehicles and pedestrians and bicyclists. Is that what you're referring to? And how to help create safer environments for the non vehicular um travel? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So this is one of those issues that I believe we need to have a pretty comprehensive conversation around because um I I think we as or I think all of us as a city council and with the community would really benefit from a broad conversation, talking to all of the different interest groups and stakeholders that um that are traveling on our roads these days. And we see so many conflicts in the news and um in our own city. So um my thought is that if it's okay with council that we do look at scheduling either, let me put this two ways. Either send it to the LAC to look at, to redo research and to find out how other cities have been successful in creating safe travels for other than the vehicle travel. That's one way to go. Uh, because that group is really uh amazing at coming up with, at doing a lot of that research and is has really um informed council with um past projects. Um, the other, pardon me, the other opportunity would be to have a good a real comprehensive study session, like I said, with the different stakeholders and learn from maybe a a past traffic engineer from another community who has been really successful in transforming their transportation systems to create more of a um or to reduce the amount of conflict on our roads. So my thought is um that we proceed with some pretty informed conversations and potentially to the LAC, whatever whatever you think is best we can follow.
Yeah. And then my question is, is the streets maintenance and public works budget nimble enough to be able to um kind of accommodate that should we move forward and learn some new things that might change the way that we want to do things? I guess that's my my biggest question.
Uh, yeah, Holly, help me with this, but I believe um once we do have some kind of broader conversation, that would be an out of cycle kind of request for city council. I'm looking for you, Holly. Do you agree with that? I don't see you. There you are.
Yes, sorry. Just trying to get my camera on. Um, yes. So uh generally what we try to do with the budget process is things that are specifically identified that have a cost associated with them and a timing associated with them, we want to put those in the budget. For things that we don't really have a concrete timing or um dollars. We'd like to get um some more information from things like study sessions or getting input from the community to identify um what is it? And then once we identify the amount and what's the timing, then we can either add it through the budget process if that's timing works, or we can add it through a supplemental process. We try not to just earmark a lot of money to put in the budget because we don't really know if it's going to be spent or not, and we try to be as accurate as we can with the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Abel, you're up. Looks like you're muted.
Uh, there we go.
There you go.
Uh, last year in September, I found um that we were under an ADA audit that uh or VADA had undergone one in uh the recent past and it turned out to be quite expensive for them. Uh, are we still under that uh participating in that audit? Uh, if not, what was the result? Monetarily?
Yes, thank you for your question. I'm going to ask our HR director Cory Peterson to give an update on that process. Thank you, Councilor Abel.
Absolutely. So we actually, as you'll also probably remember in last year's budget, we hired a full time ADA coordinator that employee is went through the processes, on boarded, we got him some initial training. Uh, hired a wonderful member out of this community resources department. We then did an RFP process for the ADA um transition plan. Uh, that was successfully completed and we are contracted with meeting the challenge to do that uh audit. The actual first day was today. They were out at Bear Creek Lake Park taking a look at um the different slopes, the different facilities. Uh, those assessments will be ongoing through uh mid December. They're going all the way out to line leveling um and pressure checking every door in the city. Um, the results of that will be compiled into a comprehensive transition plan that'll give us a roadmap for priority of the types of projects that we want to carry out for next year. Um, and the following years, it'll be obviously a multi year plan to become fully compliant. Um, as even the meet the challenge, people say you're never fully compliant with the ADA because you're ongoing, your buildings um are are deteriorating, you're making improvements, renovations, and you're building new facilities. So we have an ongoing process for that that we'll also establish, but um that plan will be shared with council and the community in January or February, depending on how the weather works out for their assessments um and how the plan gets put together. So you will absolutely see the results of that um last year's spend uh on that ADA transition plan uh for the city of Lakewood.
But it will have no impact on this on the 2003 budget, or will it?
So we did earmark a small amount of money um to potentially start some projects in 23 because we didn't want to have it sitting on the shelf with nothing to do. Um, so I don't remember the exact number. I think it's about, I think it may have been $200,000 set aside for ADA projects that would be come out of the transition plan. Ultimately, it will potentially be much larger than that, and that would come through next year's budget proposal to start in more earnest uh in 24.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other on the first round questionings? Okay, we'll go jump in the second. Ms. Springsteen.
Well, I just wanted to circle back around to my third question, which never got answered, which was with regard to public works and um what I had uh witnessed in my own neighborhood with company called Andale Construction out of Valley Center, Kansas. Um doing what appeared to be just painting the streets black. And I just feel like I'd, you know, we need to know more about where our budget is going and whether whether this is actually helping us, but I mean, what's interesting about that is that our city attorney is also from uh Valley Center, Kansas. So I I that may be a coincidence, but I'm just wondering um if we can have more information about how that how that budget is being spent and um maybe even a study session for counselors on what it is we need to do with our public works. Thanks.
Okay. So I want to just remind folks, let's keep this to the questions and and not assumptions of where people are from and keep it at a high level, please. Mr. Kirschbaum, if you're ready, I think what she's referring to is maybe the street was fogged or reconditioned, which doesn't do crack seal. And certainly, as I had referred to, there is a memo that goes out every year that talks about this, but Mr. Kirschbaum, if you're prepared, that's fine. And then um we'll keep going with questions.
Yes, I can add some additional information to that. Uh, the uh the pavement management system that we use uh on an annual and a five year basis based on condition of pavement and expected life of the pavement and where that pavement is in its life cycle will always give us the best recommendation on the maintenance action that is needed and helpful to extend. on the maintenance action that is needed and helpful to extend the service life of the pavement. That could range all the way from the cheapest activity, which is crack sealing uh up through seal coating, both of which are aimed at uh eliminating or mitigating water penetration into the pavement all the way up to the more expensive uh applications, which would be an overlay or even a a full reconstruction. So we always try to find the right activity at the right time in the pavement life for the best cost.
Thank you. Are there other questions? And I would remind the council group that we do have another meeting after this for the reinvestment authority. So if there are no other questions at this time, I would just echo that we'll continue to have a list of these questions going out, not only to this group, but the Budget and Audit Board. Uh, Ms. Bjorkland, I imagine this great presentation will be available on Lakewood Speaks for the community to be able to engage and and see all these uh uh different things as as we continue down that road. And as with any uh study session, we do have an opportunity for public input or feedback. So this is the community's opportunity to uh weigh in on the presentation tonight. Uh, there'll be three minutes and at thirty seconds, you'll hear some sort of noise. I don't know what I'll ring tonight. But uh and then when your time is up, I'll I'll let you know. So is there anybody who wishes to speak online? Please go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. I'll close that portion. And Ms. Bjorkland, forgive me, would it be possible just to remind council and the community the next steps in this process as far as dates go?
Yes, uh, so the next meeting is actually going to be with the Budget and Audit Board. And uh, thank you for bringing that up because I did want to remind council that they are welcome to come to that um meeting as well. Um, and uh, that is on September twenty eighth. And uh, the next meeting with just city council is October third. And that's the first public hearing. And then um October seventeenth is the second public hearing.
Great, very cool. Well, thank you all, and thank you to our our citizen members for your your great participation and thoughtful feedback in this process. Just a quick uh question, do we need to close out and restart? Do we have to go to a different link for the next meeting, or do we start with this one, maybe take a couple minute break and then move in?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it's the same link. Um, so if people just want to mute their screens and um have a glass of water or bio break, um then uh you can just jump right back on and then we'll add the other LRA members um when you commence that meeting as chair.
Awesome. So we are at uh eight oh eight. So if we come back at eight fifteen, Ms. Hodson?
Uh, Mayor, the the next meeting has been promoted as eight thirty, so I don't believe you can start before.
No, we can't. Okay.
Yeah, so on the agenda, it says it says eight thirty to nine. So we can always start later, but we can't start earlier than posted. So you you have a longer break.
Okay, so we'll break till eight thirty. I did receive a message from one of our council members about the proposed budget for the LRA. And I believe, Mr. Rob, was that sent out or is that posted? And then maybe we could send that back out to council.
Yeah, we can get it sent back out immediately.
Great, thank you. Ms. Springsteen?
Well, I was just wondering about uh council reports on um committees and um I had a report, so can I proceed?
Um, is it a city council committee?
Yes, campaign finance.
Okay, and are you, forgive me, are you the chair? I'm not aware.
I'm not the chair, but I thought that we could report.
Well, I offer that to the chairs for sure, but certainly.
Um, so we had a committee meeting on campaign finance and um we're attempting to change some of the language to avoid what had occurred um over this past year in terms of um actually our city going after news publications and um then um having the district court um push us back and uh let us know that we're violating constitutional rights uh by doing such. And so we had a very robust conversation about how to avoid that in the future with our language. And I also wanted to mention that on Channel Seven tonight, uh I will be appearing at ten PM regarding whistleblowing uh about intimidation of public officials who attempt to speak with the press about issues that are important to the city. So please, please view uh Channel Seven tonight for that. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Olver.
Thanks. Yeah, I I was going to leave this till later, but later's the study session, right? And we're actually in something special right now. But I was gonna, as long as Counselor Springsteen brought it up, I was going to ask later. We don't seem to be getting any committee reports. Uh, and so it was good to hear from one. And I'd love to hear from others um at the appropriate time, which might be right now. I don't know. Uh, it's either now or it's later tonight, one of those two. Um, I haven't heard uh CML or or Dr. Cog or the one I'm in uh for a long time. So I it's a good idea to get some committee reports. That's it.
So would you like to give the Dr. Cog update?
No, I'm not the uh, I'm just an alternate there, so I don't go to all the meetings.
Okay. Well, certainly at any study session, we have the opportunity to uh give committee updates. If folks want to do that, that's great. If they're not prepared, that's fine also. And the next meeting is a LRA meeting, so. All right, we'll see. Every up, Ms. Sharzai, your hand is up.
Well, I wasn't sure if Counselor Olver was asking me to give a Dr. Cog update. Is that something that he desires right now?
Uh, not now, but some at some point. It's, you know, I I don't remember. I'm I'm, okay, it's not for me because I'm actually paying attention to what's going on there. Um, but the other counselors, I would think, would be interested in also CML. I know we had a CML report months and months ago. Um, I just like to know what's going on in some of our committees. The housing, obviously, we're up to date on that. Uh, legislative isn't meeting right now. I don't know what screening is talking about. Um, now, it just seems like we're letting it, these committee reports fall through the cracks. And as for doing, giving one right now, no, I don't really need one, but the other people might.
Yeah, great. Mr. Abel?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Ms. Springsteen. That was a fine job you did. I appreciate the update. Uh, I am chairman of the Campaign Finance Committee, and I wanted to remind folks that we're having another meeting on uh September twenty seventh. I believe it's at six PM. Um, public is welcome to speak after the uh committee meeting uh winds down. So uh public comment is our last item of business. So thank you very much.
Great. All right, so with that, we're gonna take a recess until eight thirty and then we'll come back as the Lakewood Reinvestment Authority. So thank you all very much.